The regular meeting of the SARS City Council for December the 4th, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in a pleasurable evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Lightball.
Here.
Chukka.
Here.
Saq.
Here.
Before we get started into our regular format for council this evening, there, for those of you that know about our local park district, and our park district's been with us since 1994. Took about a two-year process for them to get it all up and get it running. And one of the original park commissioners is retiring after 24 years as a park commissioner. And we'd just like to say a really big thank you for everything that Rich Carpenter gave to the community and the entire county. It's because of him that so many things got up, got running, got moved forward. And he was a real pusher as far as making the park district what it is today. So, Rich, thank you for your service to the community. We certainly appreciate everything you did for the park commission. Okay.
Did you say he was retired?
Uh, Rich Carpenter is retired?
Yeah. I mean, did you say that when you were...
Yeah, I thought it.
Oh, okay.
Didn't I say it's me?
Okay.
Yeah, I thought I did. Okay. Before you, you have the minutes from the November 20th, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Myers to accept the November 20th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. You also have before you the November 27th, 2018 minutes from the public hearing that was held on that day. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So move. Second.
Mr. Shuck?
Yes.
Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Shuck to accept the minutes from the November 27th, 2018 public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion. No?
No. I'm not even on here. I mean, I spoke and as a representative of my parents across the street.
I got it.
I'm not even a husband.
We'll add that in there. Under proponents, it said Kevin McKeever from 285 Rettner Street spoke in favor of the proposed zoning amendment. And we'll add in there that Bruce Chukka on behalf of his parents spoke in favor of the proposed zoning amendment. Okay? So then do I have a motion to accept these minutes as amended?
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Shuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. This evening we have Ms. Randstad or Randstad or Carol is here to talk with us on several subjects.
Thank you, sis. Jeff McMillan.
You don't hear me.
Jeff is with me this evening as well. And he's going to talk about some items and I will about others. Really like to go through three things. Overall budget outline that I think you saw a couple weeks ago. I'll address most of that. If there's questions about some sewer projects we got to forward. When we were here last time, we started talking about the reservoirs. Yes, there's no more homework. Very, very good review of that. And Jeff will comment if it's okay about the tracking on the safety, health and safety committee and some proposed modifications to pavement markings. All right, if you take a look at the big sheet, this has been updated slightly from what I think we gave out. It shows both the construction and the engineering projects proposed for 2019. Now I'm working my way across real quickly. Feel free to ask questions. The Marion Road Signal, that's a very big deal. $150,000 budget in this for road funds. As in the past, we budgeted $600,000 for 2019 stolen pay. Arrowhead Drive should be funded with OPWC project money. The city share is at 230 and OPWC is good for about $185,000. That is anticipated, that $185,000 is set in stone yet. Then we got four projects, but first three there highlighted in green, those are all part of the CSO program. Group One Sewers, and we got that on the map, and I can get closer if you've got a question. East Mansfield, West Stone Storm. And then for Two Sewers, those projects together over $2 million. That's all zero percent loan money. We've waited about 30 years. In a way, we're timing these out. You should have to make payments on that till next calendar. That's what we're trying to do. If that changes, we'll let you all know. The next project is just, that number's somewhat of a swag. Milling up and grinding a pile of concrete, asphalt, rubble out to waste by the plant. When we did Striving Charles about five years ago, we rounded up, this is for backfill. The grinding cost about $75,000 back there. Just hard to say where that number will go. Probably going to do that early, but the grinders have to be at weather and look fine. The Bike Path is at Grant and we're going to receive from ODNR. That is along Friendship Drive from Southern Avenue on the east side back to the bridge. That $12,000 is a city share. ODNR is providing $57,000 towards the project. They've approved our preliminary plan. We're a little bit out of control as well. We can get that project until they review the final plan. Your preliminary plan review is much quicker than we thought. Sometimes it drags the feet, sometimes it don't. St. Route 4 South is an overlay project that ODOT is doing from Sandusky. Is it Sandusky that we got there?
Yeah.
Yeah, down south beyond the South Cork Line. And that's urban paved. Your share is about $170,000 at the streets, $5,000 at the storm. Let's just use to catch basic repairs that kind of thing. ODOT does not pay for the storm project, but they do share. They pay for the majority, they pay. St. Route 4 North goes from Perry beyond 30. It really is down the north Cork Line. That's a combination of ODOT money and your money, small cities, and that's small portion. I don't, I don't even think that's 20% of cost. I've got a budget number, but it's, it's much different funding factors. So that's about a $1 million project. So we're doing a good job by being able to leverage your money. That's probably the highlights and red projects. We're getting money that's here at the big next entrance. That is all the construction projects. Our fees associated with that is listed down on the next item. The only thing on here, couple things on here that are not being constructed would be the design of the Group Three Sewers. That's part of the 0% loan money. All these 0% loan money projects that I'm talking about are things that you need to do for the CSO. I think you all know that, but I want any listening audience to know that. St. Route 4 North and South, we just budgeted $10,000 during construction to be available with ODOT needs as well, like we did for State Route 98. Geotechnical, that's actually, it's not highlighted, that is a 0% loan project. Score of water compliance. And then we have nothing on the reservoirs right now because we're still working through that. It's going to be what we left that highlighted and questioned and a little more on that later. That is the program for 2019 that we're involved in. Can I answer any questions? Or there, if you've got any comments, sis? I'm good.
No, it's always been working with you guys and appreciate your planning. And we've got a table set there for the next couple of years probably that's going to keep us very busy, but make a, certainly make a difference, not only in the storm separation, but in, you know, some of the smaller things that we're looking at like State Route 4 North and South. And can't wait to get the Bike Path finished too. That'll be a nice, nice start. So thanks for all you guys do for us.
ODOT's been getting folks about leveraging that money. They're doing more urban paving now to see if you anywhere else that we were and ran a lot, State Routes coming here down. That helps a lot. Yes, Bruce?
What was Group Two Sewers? What, what was that? I mean, what's...
Group Two Sewers is, it's right here around...
Right about the area.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, yeah. Group Two is Highland Union.
Taylor.
Taylor, right around here.
What we're doing there is keeping the, the existing combines that become the storm sewer and we're putting in new sand. Kind of like we did on the sub. Sometimes it's the other way around, but that's what we're doing there. It's just an eight-inch line pretty much down the street. Now the grant for the Zermans for loan money is budgeted right now, just a patch and trench. It's not a complete overlay of it. And that has changed, we'll work through that.
I know as far as the West Stone Street area where you guys have done some work to alleviate some of that, I know I've talked to a resident at least two or three times a week and she is very happy with turnout so far of what's been done and she knows what you guys have planned going forward. She is very happy about that because she says it's going to make a very big difference to her, I think.
Well, that was one of those things that your staff was wishing. We were lucky it wasn't in the original funding application two years ago to include that. But between what it's relieving and that subdivision just south of Mansfield and then when they did their, your folks did the street, the smoke testing, one of those two streets not hot or in can, but streets didn't ease. Forward catchways and drank right into San Antonio. So we were able to sell that. We're going to stub a line off, that's not on the map, but we're going to stub a manhole or pipe out of the manhole at southeast corner of Mansfield and West Stone. And then extend down on it right away, that subdivision, pick up this for catch fix. That one right now is going straight to waste right in the land all the time. So we hit that out, reduce this cost, reduce the environment. But it was good to, I was concerned that ODAA wouldn't fund that. It ain't that now, just tell me truth, basically.
I know the people who live there, they're very happy.
Good. It's good to hear that.
Any questions?
I only had five minutes, I took 12. And I got to tell you, Jeff puts it part-time, piss jockeys. And you've got a face for serious. Jeff, go for it, I'm getting that out.
Oh, I already got one. Okay. Good evening. First thing I'll go over is the, I handed this out earlier, it's a striping plan for State Route 4 North.
We do have one round. Okay. I wonder what that was?
I highlighted on there, the items pertaining to Bike Path. It shows you where it ends and where it ends. It's going to be starting down at Perry and it will go the full length up to 30, just before the ramps to 30. The issue with it is, I guess, is the fact that there will be no parking along 4 North. 4 South, we were also looking at a bike lane on 4 South as well. The, ODOT is looking to have, we're supposed to be submitting stage three for ODOT about 14. And they need legislation on whether or not we're going to proceed with the Bike Paths. The Bike Paths, as they are designed right now, are consistent with master plan, Bike Path Master Plan in the city. So basically, a decision's going to need to be made whether we proceed with that or not. If not, we're going to make some pretty major changes in plans. But you can see where, again, it starts around Plum. It will be on both sides. There will be a single turn lane for a portion of the project as well. Are there any questions on...
As far as the, it's just going to be a painted line. Is that the only thing separating this out? Is that a standard set forth by the state, by you, by...
It's a standard set by the state. You know, can you recommend that six inch wide? It's a wider stripe than your normal edge line. So that's what they recommend.
And the ability to, to have any type more of a barrier, does that ability exist?
It was, it was requested to look at rumble strips and it could be done, but the benefit would be more for the bike rider than it would be for any vehicles because of the spacing and the depth of the grooves. Plus, there will be the striping that will go over it, which will almost go into the rumble strips.
Right. And, and the width and pavement markings are determined by a manual, called a manual uniform tracking control devices, which is pretty much what all the DOT is following. You can even do it with signals. It's kind of like the cookbook or the Bible, industry standard, follow this and, you know, I'm going to share liability is gone, but you can't make a bike way to three people while you've got trouble. You know, if you make it to five, ten miles, that's important. I think, you know, it is consistent and we made this point, well, we got the ODNR grant back on Friendship, but this grant to ODOT is consistent with the bicycle pathway plan that was prepared some years ago. They all like to see that consistency in the plan.
Just a little concerning to me. I'd like to see something that had a little more barrier between people on a bike and trucks driving down the road.
Yeah, I think that it, it meets the standard. I mean, you can do vertical plastic things. I know it's highly technical term, but you can do those.
I've heard our snowplow drivers don't like those.
Yeah, people smack into them and snow plows. You know, the raised pavement markings, ODOT does not recommend they be in an urban environment, sort of interstate, a big city perhaps. We hear that it's snowplow issue. You know, 30 years ago when I first started doing it, you didn't see raised pavement markers even this far north because it's been, they're not cheap. Now, they will be on the road once you get north of 30, they're going to be on that section of State Route 4.
Is this going to replicate something similar to be, I know when I was a younger kid up on Todd Island, they started Bike Path on Todd Island and you had the lines to separate from traffic to Bike Path. And basically, you create, it was just a sense like a double line or a wider strip. Is this going to look pretty much similar to what that would?
Yeah. And there's a, there's a big arrow for bicycles and you'll see it if you, suddenly it's highlighted, there'll be a painted bicycle kind of thing. Who's got the, one of the sets of things? And then there's signs. So you'll see this, that's actually a big, and then you'll see these signs and talking about it by my name.
Another question, and I know, and like I said, I only know this because I spent a lot of time to get up with the lady on Todd Island. If you crossed that line, that was a heavier traffic penalty than a normal crossing like a double yellow line or a, something to that effect. So, I mean, I guess that would be maybe the deterrent that gets people to pay attention a little bit more. I, I don't know necessarily, but I'm just saying from what I remember all the years up on Todd Island, they've had that Bike Path there since I was probably 12, 13 years old. And I don't know of any real issues they've ever had with it, other than the people taking enforcement of them, they cross the line and get caught.
Perhaps Rob will let us know then.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to look. I didn't know if there's something in the MRC or not for that. I'd have to check.
Assuming that's something we could adopt if we had to.
We could have a business board that's easily as well.
And in this thing, it's, we, you know, you're seeing more and more of Bike Paths in every, and there are a lot of areas for that, a lot of reasons to do it. Some areas, they, you know, doing the same thing, either suburban, urban, or the more inner rural cities and the downtown country. I mean, it's, it's, it's big time thing. If you could connect the industrial park downtown and the intact outdoor parks and you know, I'm saying you get nice and circuit, a bicycle path with for exercise and transportation. You probably got a certain workforce that will ride a bicycle out to find in the industries north of town to put their job.
There was actually a guy that for a very long time used to ride a bike out of Todd Island, IZ Tech every day. That was his transportation.
Some of that's still transportation. And I don't suspect you got a transit service, so it's a way for them to go to work and get home. So, yeah.
Is this making our, is Mark's would ask be wider or is it using the existing curbs?
It's using all the existing pavement, existing curb. You know, the width of the pavement's not going to change. But it is a full mill and pave up there. Yes, ma'am.
Would there be any loss of center turn lane space?
No, I think they're going to work in.
They get it, it's all part of it.
Yeah, it's all...
I mean, I just saw it for the first time.
Yeah. I mean, you still have the...
It's pretty much the same as it is now on everything on the center.
Unfortunately, with, you, my guess is that road, at one time I could be wrong, you might have had two lanes in each direction with the red line right down the middle. Yes, there was.
So it's wider than it needs to be in a sense for three lanes.
Absolutely. And I heard since before, ODOT and cities are one doing what they call a road die. Because the transportation needs have changed. There's four lanes now. They don't need those four lanes to go by the traffic. Almost becomes unsafe, you get two lanes in each direction for the by the traffic left. So they put them on midday hours, calling it road die, burying them up, then putting bicycle lanes in. And that, that's happening a lot in New York suburban area because the other states have taken over from the state routes and some of the townships.
Other questions regarding this?
Is there anywhere close to us that has something like this existing? I know Marion has something similar, but not, not exactly like...
Boy, yes, I don't know. I will look for it.
How close? My phone's just... I'd like some examples, you know, within an hour drive.
You know, we did this muster, if you go to Dill Avenue, that one muster, goes right up through the college. That was an $8 million project between utilities, you know, Marion overhead, modern sewer, plastic signal, streets gate. And here it was, the college was trying to tie it into downtown west. And I imagine that western, like, it really has become nice downtown, right city. And it always was, it's a nice handling college. But that, we narrowed that up. I can see the progress, but that's another job. It's a good restaurant, too, so, you know, good trip.
Other questions about this?
So, we're eliminating parking on the west side of Sandusky.
Yeah, there won't be parking on either side.
Either side, yeah, because there's no, but there's no parking.
And we've studied that, it just, I think they all get driveways, you know, they got side streets. And yes, that is a compromise. I've done, did mine on unofficial tracking. I drive up through, you know, how many cars are parked? And it's, you know, anywhere from two to seven when I drive through.
Yeah, I noticed a few, but I don't know how they're going to feel about it, so.
Other questions about that? I hear you have another subject, correct?
Yes, dude. Everything that was passed out, what we heard last time, we talked about the reservoir and possible funding. Continue to talk with ODAA and ODNR. And what was handed out was a, basically a fact list on the Water Resource Restoration Sponsor Program. Basically, it's a forgivable loan. You can't call them grass, like I said the last time, so they, they're forgivable.
And loans and loan forgiveness.
Yeah. You know, it would have said, if you look on the front page, there's the sources of WRRSB funds. And as you read that last paragraph, it says that the project implementers are not responsible for repaying any part of the loan. So it's just, it's a forgivable type of loan. I've talked with the gentleman here at EPA a couple times and the next steps are to, there's a, what they call a nomination period for these, for these funds. And it's basically calling them up, pre-nomination series of events, I guess, where they come out, they do inspection of the reservoirs, they walk around, takes notes, pictures, that kind of thing. And from what we prepare for, they give us a list of things that they want in order to be able to review everything and what we're asking and why. And based on the meetings and their site visits and the information, they go back to a panel and they review it and they make the decision whether to grant upon them or not. One of the, one of the items that was mentioned to help improve the chances was because it's on the state scenic river where it, where it outflows to, is a big driver to help with getting that kind of funding. It's not a slam dunk, but it's definitely one of the top items that they look at. So basically, it was just, you know, this is kind of an update to let you know where things stand as far as the funding is concerned. Still talk about ODNR and, you know, other guys at EPA for options that are out there. But this, we're going to, we're going to move forward and have him come out and do his inspection and look around and just go from there. That's going to give you an update. Any questions on any of that?
This one, Alan, has it down here at the bottom that what we're trying to do wouldn't fit in any of the other categories, would it?
Uh, no.
Okay. No.
Okay, that's good news to hear. That it was rather a dim picture the last, last time you painted for us. And this is good to see that there is something out there that we, we can at least turn to and, and so, and of course ODNR is aware of all of this and, and they know that it could be worked into a plan.
Yeah, there is other funding pods that we could, but this is something Jeff and Chris from our office met some time ago.
Okay. So within, are you, within the near future then, you're ready to have someone out there?
Yes, I'm hoping, hoping before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if you go over into the schedule, probably, you know, the weather meeting, you know, in early January possibly. Because the, the pre-nomination phase could take a period of time and then in July, July 1st and the 31st is where they go through the official nomination process. So we've got six months to get everything together, get our plan together, you know, notify ODNR what we're doing, throw in that whole, all lax deal so that they can get...
Yeah, especially those notifications, the people that do need to be notified that we are working on this.
Right. And we're going to notify, we're planning on bringing a plan to you in first meeting in January of what we're going to propose to ODNR. We're going to work over the next couple weeks and let's gather some additional estimates on just, you know, breaching one for reservoirs, number two, and the fees aren't able to go with that. And then the plan that we're gonna give to O D N R with some, you know, hopefully, not so much concrete dates, but pretty firm dates as to when we plan to try and get things done. That's what we're looking for. You know, I met with O D N R last week, and that was one of the, the same essay made was if we could just get a response, you know, as to a plan or an idea of where things are gonna go, that you're actually gonna try and do something, we can pump the brakes. You know, we could, we could stop the, or slow down the process.
Okay.
So, that's what we're trying to work on the next couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any last questions, someone had? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce, yes?
I say thank you.
Just say goodbye.
He remembered to say goodbye to you.
Yeah, yeah. Say hello to him today, please say goodbye. Okay. Uh, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like permission to, to address council this evening? Get your microphone, please. Give us your name and your address.
Kurt Fangalbert, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue. Where is the master bike plan? Where can I request a copy of that?
Where can you, you can request a copy of it right here.
Okay, so, are you requesting a copy of the bike plan? The ma- master bike? Well, I just didn't know where it was at. Where's it kept?
I don't know either.
I don't know.
Are you looking for a co- a copy?
Yeah, I'd like a copy.
You're making a formal request, I mean, so we'll, we'll, we'll see where it is. That was before my time here, so I don't know who has that, so.
I'm, I'm kinda concerned about bike path being too close to a lot of traffic on Route Four. And I was wondering if maybe instead of putting a bike path in, if we could redo the sidewalk going on the east side that whole way, and maybe eliminate the ordinance on not being able to ride bikes on sidewalk. And then you don't have, you know, that close proximity to, like, semis and stuff, because that, that one down there, Marion, there is no way I would ride a bike on that. That is just too close to, say, Route ninety-five, there's too much traffic going there. And has anybody asked, formally asked the factories out there, the industrial park, if they would ask all their employees, like, how many of you would ride a bike to work if we put this bike path off in all the way out here to the industrial park? Because if we're not gonna get a significant number of people saying they're gonna ride a bike path to work every day, I, I don't see why we're eliminating this parking for all those people up there on North Sandusky.
First of all, we're not gonna, man, chairman, sorry. We're not gonna, uh, change yard that's allowed bikes to ride on sidewalks.
Just on ones that we...
That would not, that would never happen. It won't happen, too. It's not gonna happen. You know, there's too many people that run, there's too many people push strollers, it's just not gonna happen. The, it's, it's a bike lane, and it'd probably be more of the proper term name. And it's, it's not just meant for people that might be, you know, riding to the, the industrial park. It's meant for, for people in the city to connect with each other, to get exercise. I just got back to Chicago for the weekend. You know, the, the neighborhoods are full of bike lanes, and, and there's a lot more traffic in Chicago than there is in Bussiris, Ohio. There's busy streets with trucks. I mean, people watch out for each other. There's always danger when you're in a bike or a car, but it's, it's, whatever. But it's, it's, they're five feet lanes and very safe. And, you know, I, for the few people that actually use that for parking, I think more people are certainly gonna use it for exercising, for biking.
Have you asked any of the people up there how they think about...
We, we have posted that, we had no comments. ODOT at required is posted on the website. There were no negative comments on it. Not one.
I might go talk to over, pass out a flyer or something, call them that, say they're thinking about eliminating that.
Mr. Pope?
Um, I just, I'll reiterate again what I reiterated when Mr. Brandstetter was here. I was maybe twelve or thirteen. The top island, I will guarantee you, gets way more traffic than Bussiris, Ohio does. That bike path has been there on the side of the main drag that goes through the entire top island for fifteen, twenty years, and I don't know of any drastic or dramatic accidents that they've ever had on that roadway. And I will guarantee you that they have just as much traffic that goes through here in the middle of summer up there on a daily basis, every day of the weekends up there.
And, and the directors, man, chairman, watch out for the bikers, you know. They watch out for each other. If you're on a bike and it's a semi, you know, you, you know, you've gotta watch.
To a certain degree, mayor, research inherent risk, just like when you get on a motorcycle and ride a motorcycle down the road. I can vouch for that, 'cause I've been dipped by a car before on a motorcycle.
Spoken like an insurance agent.
Spoken like a guy's been dipped by a car on a motorcycle.
Sure.
But I think it'll enhance our community, our, our major arteries. I, you know, I'd like to see it expanded through the city. This is a good opportunity, you know, we get the majority of the pay, vast majority of it paid for by ODOT through the small cities grant, and it'll enhance our, our major arteries.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't get three minutes of talk time, because they talked more than I did.
You still got time?
Well, I, I really think we need to get with the factories out there and ask them if they would ask their employees, you know, how many of you are gonna use this bike path? Because if we only get two people that say they're gonna commit to using it every day, I don't know if that's a wise thing to be implemented.
No, he has the floor.
Oh, you can...
No, you have the floor. It's your floor. What do you have to say? You said you weren't giving the time. We're giving you the time right now.
I, I don't have anything else to say, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to grant the dress council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We have communication, this is from the City Traffic Commission, addressed to the Health and Safety Committee, dated November twenty-one. Dear Health and Safety Committee, the City Bussiris Traffic Commission would like to recommend an amendment to the traffic control map. Number one, to amend the traffic control map to allow for bike sliced pedestrian lanes on North Sandusky Avenue, and no parking from Perry Street to the bypass, and to have a single turn lane from Perry Street to Melcher Road at the Melcher Boulevard. Number two, to amend the traffic control map to allow for bike sliced pedestrian lanes on Marion Road from Southern Avenue to Beale Avenue, remove the center turn lane with turn lane for southbound traffic from Beale Avenue, with turn lane for northbound traffic at South, Southern Avenue. Sincerely, Jeffrey Orissur, Mayor, this has to be reported to the Health and Safety Committee.
I think Melcher Road is right, Todd. I'll do it as a route.
And Melcher Road?
Yes. I haven't insured that has a business down there at the end of that.
Okay, I need a motion, man, to place this into Health and Safety Committee.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Uh...
It's okay.
Mr. Pope? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, it's in pass, it's in a committee then.
Okay, what do you do with this?
We're, we're going to discuss this. There's, uh, we have, as far, this is sitting before us right now, where the ODOT is waiting for this information, and they want, they want legislation from us by the fourteenth. One of the things that has been suggested to us is that we, after the committee meetings on Thursday evening, that we have a special council meeting to discuss this, or to, to pass the legislation for this. After listening to comments and other things here this evening, I think that's too fast. I think that, uh, my opinion would be that we would have a special council meeting in the following week so that there is time for people to look this through, digest it, and understand exactly what is going to be happening in this, rather than us trying to push it. I mean, we got caught up in the fact that they knew they had a date of the fourteenth, but they didn't get the paperwork and everything to us in time. And so, I think we need a little bit more time to just simply look at this and, and make sure everybody understands what's going on with this. So, it's up to you whenever you wanna hold the meeting. If we wanna wait and see when we can get everybody together that following week, we can do that, or we can do it a special meeting after Thursday night's meetings.
Do we have the public hearing on the thirteenth? Do we do it before or after the public hearing?
We could do that. Easily, everybody's gonna be together anyway.
Maybe the day before the fourteenth. I mean, it's kinda cut me close, is I...
Okay, is that workable with everybody? Okay, we'll verify times and everything else. And of course, as with any meeting that we hold, it will be gotten to the press, and it will be posted on our city website, it'll be on Access Channel, and it will be posted here about when we're gonna have that meeting, so...
Be tomorrow, so, then tomorrow, I think it'll be tomorrow.
Okay, we'll get all that answered and things. If that's okay with everybody. I've seen shaking of heads as to that's okay.
Much appreciated.
Okay. Um, we did the City Traffic Commission. Okay, that was all there was for communications and petitions. Stand-in committee reports. Ms. Sack, would you like to get us started, please?
Special Finance Committee met Monday, November twenty-sixth at one oh three P M. Members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and himself. Number one, the Special Finance Committee meeting was called by committee members Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and Anthony Charde, and Wireball to discuss the two thousand nineteen budget. The meeting was called order by Sack at one oh three P M. Number two, two thousand nineteen budget. The committee discussed proposed budget, then materials for two thousand nineteen with Mayor Jeff Reeser, Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner, Auditor Joyce Schiffer, Service Department Jeff Dunn, Fire Chief Jeff Keller, and Fire Captain Ted Swinley. Discuss for A, safety hall improvements, B, new infrastructure department, C, swimming pool, dining boards, lifeguard stands, D, drainage issues in the Sinby of Tiffen Street, E, purchase of new fire engine gear, sharing of a boat with water distribution, and G, Wireball adjourned the Special Finance Committee meeting at two eighteen P M.
Any questions or comments regarding this meeting? No, moving on. Uh, as special, was this a special economic development meeting?
It was a special thing because of money.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Economic development, Dr. Pope. All right. Where did I, I got ahead of myself. Okay, she's gonna get us started with the whole thing. I dropped down three lines. Okay.
Bussiris City Council joint special committee meeting met Monday, November twenty-sixth at six o'clock P M. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, Dan Pope, and Andrew Shaw. Number one, Bussiris City Joint Committee meeting was called order by Sack at six P M. The meeting was moved from its regular date of November twenty-second to accommodate Thanksgiving. Number two, public participation. Max Miller, Executive Director of the Bussiris Tourism and District Bureau, gave an update on the Bureau's present initiatives, which include revamping the website, putting together a self-guided history tour for the county, and highlighting State Route Four as a Bureau's corridor. Number three, order of committee business. A, Finance Committee met at six oh eight P M, this is at three P M. Members present, were Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, Dan Wireball, and Monica Sack, Chair. Number one, employee manpower ordinance. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that the salary figures for the police and fire chiefs need to be changed as your department contract terms extended to two thousand eighteen. In addition, salary figures for the Civil Source Commission need to be corrected. Previous legislation changing them was not incorporated in the existing employee manpower ordinance. Myers made a motion to request legislation to repeal and replace the existing employee manpower ordinance to make these changes, with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, Bussiris Fire Department contract. Ratliff reviewed the most recent contract negotiation and mediation. He noted that the International Association of Firefighters, Local eleven twenty, did not vote on the new contract within the allotted timeframe, allowing it to take effect automatically. Ratliff detailed changes made from the previous contract, particularly in regard to health insurance, sick day accumulation, and wages. The contract is in effect from January first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Mayor Jeff Reeser indicated that department buyouts will be reduced significantly under the new contract. Legislation is needing, is needed authorizing the mayor to formally enter into the contract with Local eleven twenty. Wireball made a motion to request legislation with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Three, various reductions. Auditor Joyce Schiffer reported that the following reductions need to be made. A, decreasing the current balance in two eighty-six, two thousand eighteen Victim of Crime Act, seven, seven twenty-eight, victim advocate, twenty-one personal services by one thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty-four cents to close out the grant. B, decreasing the current balance in four eleven, OPW speed, Woodland Avenue water line, seventy-five twenty-five, Water Works distribution, twenty-five capital outlet, by one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to close and move to two thousand nineteen budget. C, decreasing the current balance in seven fifty solid waste, seventy-five fifteen solid waste management, twenty-one personal services by forty-five thousand dollars to bring in line with actual work needs. Shaw made a motion to request legislation making the mayor reduce, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Four, proposed housing study. The Crawford County Partnership for Education and Economic Development has proposed a study to be conducted by Dan Turin Associates, which would look into the housing needs faced by the cities of Galleon and Bussiris, specifically what types of housing need to be built here to attract business. The cost of the study would be forty thousand dollars, with the partnership committed to covering half of that cost. Galleon has agreed to contribute five thousand, while another five thousand would be required from it via donations or some other means. Bussiris' contribution would be ten thousand dollars. Jerry Frankhouse, the second and the executive development director of the C C E E D P, was present to answer various questions about proposal. Schiffer said any appropriation to paper the study would likely be made in two thousand nineteen. Myers made a motion to request legislation to enter into a contract of C C E E D P not to exceed ten thousand dollars, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Number five, Sack retest Finance Committee at six fifty-three P M.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this report? No? Okay, moving on, economic development, Mr. Pope.
Economic development was called to order at six fifty-three P M. Members in attendance were Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. First up, Bussiris Public Library, Bussiris Public Library sent a letter to council asking that it consider reappointing Casey Grau to a four-year term on Library's Board of Trustees. Her present term expires at the end of this year. McKeever made a motion to make the reappointment, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. The matter will go to full council at the next regular meeting in December fourth. No legislation is required. Pope resets the economic development minutes at thirty-four P M.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that report? I do need a motion to reappoint Casey Grau to a four-year term on the Library's Board of Trustees. She was recommended by the library staff and is agreed to serve if appointed.
So, move.
Okay, motion by Mr. Myers, okay, and second by Mr. Truca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. So, congratulations, Casey Grau, you've got another four-year. It's nice people step forward like that to fill in these positions in the community, because library has a lot to offer to our community. Health and Safety Committee. Mr. Myers?
Health and Safety Committee met November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, six fifty-four to seven twenty-four P M. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item number one, liquor permit renewals. Council received a letter from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control notifying council that all liquor control permits in the city expire on February one, twenty nineteen, and will be up for renewal. The agency advised that the council has the right to object to any permit renewals and request a hearing. Police Chief David Kepke has reported that he has no objections to any renewals. Law Director Rob Ratliff expressed concerns about three permit holders that sell items that could be construed as drug paraphernalia. To object, council will have to pass separate resolutions for each permit premises specifying the concerns and legal grounds for the objection, accompanied by a statement from the law director specifying same. Ratliff cautioned that the city's chances of prevailing at such a hearing are minimal given a lack of convictions of relevant charges. Following a discussion on alternative methods of voicing objections to the businesses in question, the matter was continued. Item two, derelict buildings. Ratliff indicated that his office intends to simplify the city's version of the International Property Maintenance Code next year. He distributed a draft version of a vacant building ordinance, which would require a property owner to register a vacant building for annual fee, retain a local agent, and maintain the structure. He suggests that such an ordinance would give the city more control over the disposition of such properties. The law director was asked if the city could shut off services to houses with outstanding property maintenance violations. Ratliff indicated that can only be done if the property is condemned. The matter was continued. Item three, Myers resets the Health and Safety Committee at seven twenty-four P M.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes from the Health and Safety Committee? None? Okay, moving on. Public lands and buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Public lands and buildings committee met Monday, November twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, began at seven twenty-four P M. Members Bruce Truca... Members Bruce Truca, Doug Fote, Mark McKeever, and myself. First up was city parking lots. It was noted that privately-owned dumpsters that are not enclosed are placed on some of the public parking lots, and concerns were expressed about the city maintaining these parking lots when adjacent businesses are the primary beneficiaries of that maintenance. Parking meters were suggested as a means to generate income as well as possibly selling the parking lots. It was also noted that ample parking is needed to attract businesses and customers to the downtown. Following an extensive discussion, it was decided that other cities would be contacted about how they address the issue of large trash bins on public property. The matter was continued. Wireball resets the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 7:47 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes from the Public Lands and Buildings? None? Right now? Oh, okay. Would you finish out then for us, please, Dan?
Sure. Public participation was next, and we've had none. Then I ask for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committee's motion by Fote and second by Truca to adjourn at 7:47 PM. Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on, Finance Committee met a special session on Monday, December 3, 2018, at 1:00 PM. Ms. Sack?
Special Finance Committee members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Number one, the Special Finance Committee was called by committee members Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and Chair Monica Sack to discuss the 2019 budget. The meeting was called order by Sack at 1:05 PM. Number two, 2019 budget. The committee discussed proposed budget expenditures for 2019 with Mayor Jeff Reeser and Auditor Joyce Schiffer. Discussed were A, roof on B and T Building, B, software upgrade for Auditor's Office, C, swimming pool lifeguard stand, D, pine reservoir, three, Sack adjourned the Special Finance Committee meeting at 2:24 PM.
Okay, are there any questions or comments regarding that Finance Committee meeting? None? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Traffic Commission. May I repeat, sir, we don't have any minutes. Is there anything that you wish to discuss about traffic, or?
Oh.
Does anyone have any questions for you? Whichever.
Traffic seems to be flowing smoothly.
Flowing smoothly?
I can't think of anything right now that I want to bring up about traffic. But I don't entertain questions.
No questions? I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports.
So moved, second.
Mr. Wireball and Mr. Fote?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Fote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. We have reported city officers. The mayor's report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a formal report tonight. I just want to make a couple of comments about the passing of our great President George H.W. Bush. You think about, he was the last president of what was termed the "Grace Generation" by Tom Brokaw. And it was a fitting tribute to that generation. And George H.W. Bush was the epitome of the greatest generation of people who, at 18 years old, couldn't wait to enlist and defend the country in World War II. Enlisted in the Navy and became the youngest fighter, the fighter pilot to serve in World War II. His family had money, they had a legacy of service though, too. He didn't need to do that. His family served all the way back centuries, all the way back to 16th, 17th century. And it was part of the family model, what they taught, taught by his parents. And, you know, not everything was easy when you jump into political life. You're the target of a lot of things. I mean, you can argue that it might have been a kinder, gentler time when George Bush, 41, was president, but, you know, the history of humanity and our country, there's been a lot of contention in politics. And I guess it wasn't a whole lot different back then. He was a very humble man. And what was very cool about him is he reached across the aisle. I was watching on C-SPAN Tonight, and last night, too, it was fascinating to me, the volume line in State of the Rotunda, the amount of people that came back and sang the prayers, and the amount of politicians, both, on both sides of the aisle, paying their respects. And I think that comes from humility. And one more thing about him, that he was lacking a lot of, the politicians, they had kindness. But when he had to be tough, he was tough, right? Remember the, he had to kick the Iraqis out of Kuwait and with the help of Norman Schwarzkopf and many of other good veterans, and he did it. And he has policy, he has qualities we all need to emulate. So, he was the last president of the World War II generation. And it was very touching to them. If anybody saw it, you might want to see it replay. His good friend Bob Dole came there, 95-year-old Bob Dole was a veteran also, was severely injured in Italian theater. And he helped him stand out of his wheelchair and gave him a salute. And I thought, you know, man, we're going to miss these guys. We're going to miss these guys. And we were blessed for having them. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, are there any questions that any of us could ask for the mayor of the safety committee? None? Okay. Moving on to the Service Safety Director's report.
Couple referrals, it looks like. We're throwing the material bids to the Service Committee and the farmland bids to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Leave pickup is ongoing, contrary to popular opinion. We don't stop picking up leaves until they're all picked up either, or there's a 20th snow hole, we can't get to them, right? But we should, we should have them all picked up. One of the things that delayed them this year, like, they came down late, right? And then they came down fast. And then it rained, and then it snowed. So we've had, you know, a lot of challenges. Actually, the city crew has been twice through town, believe it or not. And they're on their way through. They start at one end and go to the other end, too. And I would just say, and I put it on Facebook and I put it out on Twitter, if your leaves have not been picked up by the end of next week, please call the office. 562-6767 at my extension 223. And we'll make sure they do get picked up. Thanks for your patience. And that's all I can say about leaves.
Okay. Any questions about the Service Safety Director's report? None? I need a motion then to refer the material bids to Service Committee?
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Fote.
What about Mr.?
Mr. McKeever?
McKeever.
To refer the material bids to Service Committee, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. We also need to refer the farmland bids. Those come up once every three years.
Yes, they do. It's that time again.
It is that time again, to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Fote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. Seems like we just did those three years ago. Okay. Moving on to the law director, Mr. Ratliff.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't really have anything to report. I do need to refer one item, I need to refer the Old McFarlane's Travel Park property to Public Lands and Buildings.
Okay, I need a motion then to...
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Truca, to refer the Old McFarlane's Travel Park to Public Lands and Buildings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. No other words of wisdom tonight?
I can make some up.
No, I don't.
It would be very wise, though.
On to the auditor, Mrs. Schiffer. Oh, this is, looks like a good report.
Yeah. That's very general.
Yeah, it is.
It is very general. You do have a statement of cash position from the end of November, the income tax comparisons and the revenue tally. And I did adjust the utility funds since the projects that we were expecting to get loan money on, you know, did not come in. So, adjusted those without considering that, and it makes our targets look a whole lot better.
A whole lot better, sure.
So, yeah, my referrals. All necessary appropriations, reductions, I should have transfers in there also, and advances to close out the year. I'm working on them now, and hopefully they'll be fairly short this week. So, I hope to have everything from you for Thursday evening. I will not be here Thursday evening, otherwise occupied.
Well, if you need me, I can get with you Thursday, Thursday, and you truly understand that everything does depend on you. So I need a motion then there. We'll get our usual paperwork, it's not available now, it'll be available Thursday. Will it be available Thursday at noon? If anybody wants it ahead of time? Andrew Shaw?
Yeah, should be.
Andrew Shaw?
And I will try to have the, I was going to try to do it today, but have your budget worksheets and estimated year imbalances and everything for the 19 budget. We'll be discussing it, too.
Madam President, should we amend it to include transfers?
Yes, I'm going to. Well, we don't, yeah, she added transfers in there, so it includes transfers. So, all necessary appropriations, reductions, and transfers, and advances to close out the year. I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Fote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. We have the treasures. Oh, you had in here the auditor statement of cash position. That's for you to review from November 30. And then you also have, last meeting we gave you the treasures report for October of 2018. I need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Myers, to accept and file the treasures report for October of 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. We have nothing to review. Chief, I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Ms. Sack, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of the standing committees and of city officers. Anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have five pieces of legislation for ordinances and one resolution. Ordinance number 53, 2018, vacation in alley being 141 feet in length and 12 feet in width, beginning at South Spring Street between In Lot 411 to the north and In Lot 415 to the south. That is referred to the public committee. Ordinance number 54, 2018, amending and supplementing Ordinance number 57, 2017, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018, by decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $1,707.64 within the Victim Advocate category within the 2018 Victims of Crime paragraph, further decreasing the current balances in the Capital Outlay line item by $165,000 within the Waterworks Distribution category within the OPWC, Woodland Avenue Waterline sub-paragraph, finally decreasing the current balances in the Personal Services line item by $45,000 within the Solid Waste Management category within the Solid Waste sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to Finance. Ordinance number 55, 2018, repealing and replacing Ordinance number 13, 2018, establishing the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Desires, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Desires, Ohio, retroactive to May 1, 2018, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to Finance. Ordinance number 56, 2018, an ordinance authorizing and adopting the fact-finder's report and contract as the contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1120 and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to Finance. And Resolution number 248, 2018, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Desires, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Crawford Partnership for Education and Economic Development to enter into a contract with Danter and Associates to conduct a county-wide housing study at a cost not to exceed $10,000, and authorizing the auditor to draw all necessary warrants for payment thereof. That's referred to Finance.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion then to accept this as the first reading.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. Ordinance number 53-2018 is referred back to Plaid. Ordinance number 54-2018 is referred to Finance. Ordinance number 55-2018 is referred to Finance. Ordinance number 56-2018 is referred to Finance. And Resolution number 248-2018 is also referred to Finance Committee. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. No comments? Okay, do we need a reset? I'm in good shape, okay. Committee reports on pending legislation, Plaid Committee?
Yes, Plaid Committee is in favor of Ordinance number 53-2018, the alley vacation.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to Ordinance 54-2018, the various reductions. Finance is favorable to Ordinance 55-2018, the employee manpower. Finance is favorable to Ordinance 56-2018, the fire department contract. And Finance is favorable to Resolution 248, 2018, the housing study contract.
Okay, thank you very much. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Truca, to accept the reports for pending legislation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you very much. Refer to consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 53-2018, which is the alley vacation, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ordinance number 53, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 53-2018?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Ordinance number 53-2018, the alley vacation, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 54-2018, which are the various reductions, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 54, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 54-2018?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance number 54-2018, the various reductions, is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 55-2018, the employee manpower changes, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, Sack, then?
Wireball?
Yes.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
ordinance number 55, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 55-2018?
So moved. Second. Foote?
Yes.
Shalk?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Shalk?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
ordinance number 55-2018, the employee manpower is duly adopted.
For the second and third readings of ordinance number 56-2018, which is the fire department contract, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second. Myers?
Yes.
Shalk?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Shalk?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 248, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 248-2018?
So moved. Second. Foote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 248, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 248-2018?
So moved. Second. McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 248, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 248-2018?
So moved. Second. Foote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution 248-2018, the housing study contract is duly adopted. Thank you. Unfinished businesses, does anyone have anything to bring up this evening for council? None? Moving on to Newman Missalini's business. Thursday, December 6, is Candlelight Breakfast.
She's having a rough one today.
I know, but CNN's breakfast is going up, but it's not Candlelight. Okay.
We will have Juana Chili again this year, too.
Okay.